Twenty twenty four. Everyone's here except Commissioner Roberts. I noticed in one of our, one of the things I read for today that this meeting, that document was called a briefing meeting. To me, that sounds maybe better than pre-meeting, not sure why. So I'm gonna say this is our pre-meeting, our briefing meeting. Call everyone. On the agenda, we have a minutes to approve. Questions or concerns now about the minutes? Maybe that's where I read the briefing. A public hearing issue on Taco Bell West Highland. We can have brief overview of that, please.
Yes, this is a new fast food restaurant, Taco Bell, that's going in on the corner of Highlands Loop Road and Seventy Eight Hundred South. So this will be just kind of on the northwest corner of that roundabout there, just next to Les Schwab. So it's pretty, pretty standard. They're gonna have a single drive-through. Parking lots on the west, buildings on the east. They'll be, they'll have a single point of access just on that north side. That's an existing driveway that's already there. That they share with Les Schwab. Les Schwab actually has an access on Seventy Eight South, but this one will not have a second access just because it's so close to that. Parking's looking good. There, there mean parking requirements. Fire departments looked at it. They have enough clearance to get around the building. That's that. Public utilities are looking good. And that's about it. Okay?
Thank you. Text amendments, two of them. Ari, is that you?
So Brian, Craig, and Jason, we're here, but this is one of those things that it's not really a planning thing, but it's a lab use ordinance, and so the planning commission needs to make recommendations, so. So both of these gentlemen here are here to give the information on what they're doing. So if you want to go ahead and bring in.
Sure. The purpose of the proposed revision, city code right now, currently the code reads that the resident is responsible to pay for the concrete on their sidewalk in front of the house. So if Jason's crew goes in to do any work, the sidewalk is heaved or has any great differential or any potential liability of trip to fall, Jason and his group have to go to the resident and ask them to pay for the concrete.
That that's fine.
We, they, we get told, no. Surprise, I know. So the purpose in this is to, to put the the cost of material back onto the city so Jason could go in and do his work without having to wait on a resident to make a decision. Give them an estimate, then they wait longer, and then the estimate has to be changed because it's over thirty days or whatever. So the bottom line is the sidewalk doesn't get repaired, just kicking the can down the road. Because he has to have their permission to do the, the work. So this proposed change will allow Jason to go in. And we're getting a plan together for the replacement. And go in and do his needed work without having to go ask for funds from the resident. That's the.
So how many people pay?
Uh, Jason would know better. There's some that do, but a lot of them don't, but it's, it's an efficiency issue too because we have to stop that, you know? We can't just go into a neighborhood and start preparing a whole bunch of areas because we have to go to each house, whether it's one section or you know, ten sections, and we have to prepare them an estimate based on, you know, how many we guess we're gonna get to do, and then we have to go back and adjust the estimate a lot of times if people accept. Because the cost of concrete varies depending on the load. You know, a lot of times you won't you got work orders here or there and you can't get a full load, so, but then if you get more people to agree, the cost gets less, and if you get less, the cost gets more. And plus, it's hard to, you know, it's hard to ask somebody for money for materials that lives in some of the neighborhoods that are over thirty years old, tops completely spoiled off, and it's really you know, it's just past its life expectancy, and so it makes it really hard for us to make a lot of pairs and do an efficient job, so we you know, we try other means if possible, but if they don't pay, we pretty much just, there's nothing we can do. It looks like.
Current, yeah.
Liability still though.
So how does that work with the Highlands District? Because I know that last year, some of the sidewalks in the Highlands District was fixed. Did the residents pay for that, or, because they, they raised them instead of replacing?
Should raise them?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's our mudjacking. That's one of the options we don't charge for. We only charge when we have to replace. But sometimes we can't do that option if it's like cracked because it'll lift uneven, or we can also, we also grind and stuff like that. But when we do those options, which is our preferred option, especially the way it is now, it's not charged to the homeowner. But there's a lot of ones where trees are lifting and, you know, and some of the trees were city-approved trees, and they left the sidewalk, and the residents don't feel like they should have to pay for it. They also feel like it's a sidewalk that they shouldn't have to pay. So it just makes it hard to do our job, I guess.
Yes. Thanks. And the second text amendment, land community hillside zone?
And so this was when the PCH was passed a few years back. And it was communicated to the attorney who wrote it. It was an outside counsel that wrote the PCH. It's all Trish and Jay. You love the commission? I know Trish and Jay were on the commission for sure, or maybe you were too. Um, and so the design and the thing to keep in mind, it'll only affect which by the way has been renamed Terrain. It's gonna be named Terrain.
West Patch, Terrain West.
Terrain West. The Terrain.
So it's, it's Frenchified with. I like that.
Maybe, I guess, he can do a French.
And, and French, it would be pronounced Terrain. I don't think they're gonna pronounce it so well.
Not a good name, but.
Anyway, this will only affect Terrain. And because that's the only, you know, that seven hundred acres is the only zone PCH currently. And the plan has always been to the design of the townhomes is to have twenty frontage. Now, there was some confusion last week amongst others that we were talking about setback, setback property line to the front of the building. Frontage is the frontage of the lot. It's only for townhomes. And if you're more townhomes, they're always connected to the other all the taxing family. So we've reduced it from twenty-two to twenty. It would still have two-car garage and that thing, but the other thing to remember about Terrain is that everything, every residential in there is very low. There's no front load product, and so it won't affect cars over parked over sidewalks or anything like that. And then the second setback was I think there was some confusion on the setback between townhomes. It should have been a total of ten, not ten per, you know, because that makes twenty feet between townhomes. Really, with their design, they're trying to it, it's really gonna be more of a downgrade type development, so they want to squeeze the townhomes together and have larger open space.
So it's ten feet total between the two dwellings?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was, that's basically a a chair. Those, those two simple text amendments.
Thank you. Before we get into training, I want to ask a question. It might affect, it might affect a future meeting. It might not affect any meeting at all. So may I ask? The legislature just approved a bill or several bills having to do with affordable housing. Trying to create affordable housing in the state. I was curious to know that that affects West Jordan, and if so, we know how yet, or when, or anything like that?
And I don't know, as I haven't studied personally the affordable housing bills as much. I was focused more on the ones that we had a direct effect that starting to implement. One of the ones that affected how and when we look at civil engineering drawings and deciding whether that's gonna be at the preliminary or final subdivision stage. And a few other things along those lines. We, we can look into that and answer your question, but I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know enough about it yet, but I know a lot of it is there is some funding available. And I don't know if that flows through cities or not, or directly to potential buyers, but I suspect there's a lot more need than there is money, but anything helps, right? We'll look into it and report back.
No, let, let's ask the commissioners. Are any of you interested in hearing more about that, or is it just me?
No.
The one I was looking at, and I don't know if it was the same one maybe you're looking at, the money would actually go right to the developer from the state. Yeah, I think it doesn't. It didn't even buy, I mean, but they had to have so many a certain percentage of the development go into the affordable housing and so there was a bunch of stipulations on that, but I think it just basically allowed the developer to apply for, for those grants.
Well, and what, what I heard was that they were going to do a deep dive into the building code and look for opportunities in building code to streamline things or make things way out of.
I'll see if that works. It is took a shot this year. Extra, the, actually. So just, yeah, we'll look into that, both the housing bills.
I don't know that we need a ton of information on that, but there's, there are parts of that that affects what we do here. That would be what would be most interesting.
There are number of trainings on the second, maybe, so there is no training.
Oh. Who's happy? Yeah, so we've got seventeen minutes or so.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
On my lot, our, our, by our lot. You know, we live on that northwest corner. There's a little chunk that's now for sale. And I believe the LDS Church owns it, or some, they did own it at one point. I just want to know what the access is to that little chunk, because I don't know if there's any access. How would I find that out?
And I'll look tomorrow and then email you. If you can. What would help me is if you could send me the email, and then I'll remember. Otherwise, I won't remember until I see you next time. No.
I'll email you. There was an easement that was vacated by the LDS Church that had the back twenty feet of those western homes, but so I, now that it's vacant, I have to how the new owner would access that property.
Yeah, because I don't know. I'd have to watch. Send me the email.
I'll do it right now. I have the multitext.
When I was in college, I took several upper-level classes in philosophy. And one of the great things I learned was that where you sit determines what you see. And what I see on one clock here is five fifty-seven. This one is five fifty-eight. That one is six o'clock. So we're starting now. This is the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of West Jordan for April second, twenty twenty-four. All commissioners are present. We begin with the approval of the minutes from the March nineteenth meeting. Any discussion or questions? Would somebody like to make a motion? Commissioner Thomas?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from March nineteenth.
Mr. Allen?
Second.
Motion is made in second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Any post? Thank you. The next item is a public hearing with final action by the planning commission for Taco Bell West Highland on Seventy Eight Hundred South. This item requires that seven criteria be met for this, for this item. Is Paul Snyder here? Would you like to step to those microphones? Give us your name, and you'll have, well, just give us your name. Those microphones should be on.
Chris Poulsen with Benchmark Engineering.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead and tell us all you want to tell us about this proposal.
Okay. The proposed project is a new Taco Bell restaurant at the corner of Seventy Eight Hundred South and Haddon Loop Road. It'll service the surrounding SC two zone. There's an existing Smiths marketplace there and some proposed future resident, not resident, excuse me, restaurants and retail in that area that will also be serviced by that Taco Bell. It meets all the setback requirements. It's closest to the proper line is thirty-seven feet on the eastern side. The building was shifted as far to the east as possible to provide separation from the existing tire service center to the west. It meets the landscaping requirements by exceeding them. It's a thirty-nine percent, which meets and exceeds the fifteen percent requirement. From an architectural standpoint, it is one-story with From an architectural standpoint, it is one story with parapets on the eastern and western faces to break up the facade, be constructed with cement hardy board and metal siding. The landscaping plan shown right there shows, oh, sorry, let's stick with architectural. So you can see the different facades, the east and west, like I said, have a parapet. The north and south do not. They're less than thirty feet in width, so they're not required to have anything to break up those facades. There's landscaping with additional trees on the southern side to provide separation, I guess, or additional coverage between the southern side of the building and Seventy-eight Hundred South. The utilities are connecting to existing utilities that are already running along the eastern side of the property that had been stubbed as part of the subdivision that was proposed and approved in two thousand and eighteen. There's existing sewer, water, and storm drain that those are connected to. The storm drain is detained on site and then connects to an existing storm drain pipe that runs to the north. For access, you can see on that, the project will be accessed from an existing drive approach and driveway that currently services the tire service center to the west. No proposed changes are being made or done for that access to the north. There's two existing egress lanes, one for left and one for right, and an inbound ingress lane. There's an existing water meter as well that was stubbed in this property. That water meter will be used to service this new Taco Bell project. For parking requirements, the minimum parking requirements are twenty-six. This development has the twenty-six minimum parking requirements with ADA parking stalls on the eastern, excuse me, the western side of the building. There's ADA ramps from those to the building and also ADA ramps that go to the north and south around the drive-through to provide access to the public right-of-way in Seventy-eight Hundred South and Highland Loop Road. I believe that covers the gist of the overall site. Are there any specific questions or additional information we need to go over?
It looks like there are none right now, but we'll have you back up if we have more questions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Let's see, let me get to this slide here. Sorry, this mouse is very sensitive. There we go. Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you, Chairman. So the, there are actually two items for you tonight with the, this Taco Bell project. The first and main one is the preliminary site plan. And then the second is an administrative conditional use permit for a fast food restaurant in an SC two zone. So just kind of a reminder, there'll be two motions, one for each of those, those items. But I'll just kind of get into this with the zoning. So the site's zoned SC two, which is a commercial zone. Then the future land use map has designated this area for community commercial as well. So those, those two are aligned and with this being a fast food restaurant, those are, are allowed in the SC two zone as conditional use and are typically found in most of those throughout the city. So we feel the use is, is appropriate for that zone and should fit in well with the site. The applicant kind of already went into the existing access there. There's a single access off of Highland's Loop Road, which is shared with the Les Schwab. And based on the design of the site, you can kind of see kind of a circular traffic pattern there with the, the parking lot and the drive-through. So with that design, we feel that that single access should be sufficient. There wasn't any access on to Seventy-eighth just because of its proximity to that street corner. Generally, we require those to be much further away for safety reasons. So that's the reason why we're just using the single access here. Then with the stacking requirements, with this being a drive-through, they're required to have at least six stacking spaces in the drive-through lane. When we measured it out, from the pickup window to the entrance of the drive-through, they have a space for about eight cars there, which when you combine that with the drive aisle in the parking lot, you get about seventeen cars. So we feel the site's pretty well-designed to handle any, any drive-through traffic. I should point out too, that the Les Schwab next door has an access on Seventy-eight Hundred South. So in the unlikely event that traffic becomes an issue, they do have, do have a way to get in and out of there. So. So the design review committee reviewed this about four months ago, just looking at the architecture and the site design, and noticed that the south elevation was just a little bit bland, particularly for something that would be facing Seventy-eight Hundred South, which is a pretty busy street. So the recommendation was to either kind of spruce that up architecturally or to provide a row of evergreen trees to kind of just screen those utility boxes there and to just give it a little bit more aesthetic value. So the applicant's chosen to go with a row of evergreen trees, and so we've included that as a recommendation requirement of approval. So you can kind of see that here, but basically we decided to go with evergreen trees that are eight feet tall, just so that we could get those above the utility boxes at planting. So and then, of course, those would mature to be much higher. Anyway, that's kind of the, the reasoning behind that requirement. And then with the administrative conditional use permit, we reviewed that. There's really no major impacts that really need to be mitigated. I kind of went over the stacking and the traffic. The surrounding businesses is, well, a tire shop with the Les Schwab, so really not anticipating a whole lot of impact from a fast food restaurant there. So, so there are no conditions recommended for that conditional use permit. So, so with those findings, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary site plan and the administrative conditional use permit. And I can answer any questions I may have.
Mr. Allen?
All right, two quick questions. Could you go back to the zone map? It's probably the best one to look at. On the south side of the site, right up against Seventy-hundred South, there's a little bit of a jog there when you move to the west, away from the site toward Les Schwab. Is any of that in the way for the expansion of Seventy-eight Hundred South in the future? In other words, is, is some of this going to have to be dedicated or otherwise taken by the city?
Everything's dedicated to the city currently, so we should be good.
So that jog in the, the property line is just kind of a weird anomaly, but we've got what we need.
Yep, we have what we need.
Second question, let me pull up my notes. Sorry, I forgot what it was already. Do we have any concern if the, if folks use the Les Schwab parking lot for access to and from the, the Taco Bell?
Not particularly. We haven't heard anything from, any concerns from Les Schwab, but I think when it was designed, it was intended to be a shared access, so.
So, and maybe I'm, I apologize, I'm diving into a detail and I don't think at the end of the day it's going to matter too much, more of a curiosity. But the public road then comes off of Highland's Loop Road and is the entire circuit all the way back to Seventy-eight Hundred South? It's not a, just a dead-end public road that stops the parking lot?
Correct, yeah. So that, I'll go back to the site here. So you can kind of see that access road runs along there, and that's actually concrete on the north side of the Les Schwab building, so that, that is open as of today. So you could actually drive a car through there if you wanted to.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Other questions, comments? I would just note that when I read through the material, was glad that the designer review committee made the recommendations they did. I think that was very good and helpful, so I appreciate their, their looking at this. If there are no other questions, I think we're ready to hear a motion. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. This, this was notice for public hearing. Thank you. So public hearing is now open for Taco Bell West Highland. I don't think there's anybody here in the, in the chambers to speak on this. Is there anybody online? Nobody online? That's a very quick public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Allen?
I'd be happy to make a recommendation. Okay. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanation received today, I move that the planning commissioner approve the preliminary site plan for Taco Bell West Highland located at Fifty-seven Eighty-six West Seventy-Eight Hundred South in the SC two zone with the requirements of approval listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Hatch? First by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Hatch. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Yes, and there is a second motion attached to this. Mr. Allen?
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commissioner approve the administrative conditional use permit for a restaurant, Fast Food Limited for Taco Bell West Highland located at Fifty-seven Eighty-six West Seventy-Eight Hundred South in the SC two zone with no conditions of approval as explained in the staff report.
Second by Commissioner Hatch. Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Hatch, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next up is text amendment regarding maintenance of sidewalks. This is a public hearing item with planning, with recommendation to the city council.
Thanks, Commissioner. The purpose of the proposed revision is to shift the material and labor cost back to the city. The current code on sidewalk repair right now states that the homeowner that fronts the sidewalk is responsible to pay for the material and labor. It's, it's an efficiency and a liability issue. When we go to replace a section of sidewalk, we have to compile, get with the resident, compile a bid, and let them decide if they're going to pay for the material and labor. Time passes, then we have to redo the bid, and it ends up, generally, nine times out of ten, it ends up not happening. They don't want to pay for it. So if we can, if in the proposed change, it would kick that all back to the city to where our streets crews could go in and do the, the work needed without having to get permission or get the money or the funding from the resident to, to make the repairs. So there's areas in the city that are in desperate need. And in moving forward with this, or the streets crew can go in, get the work done, and be out of there. Where right now, it's kicking the can down the road. If the resident doesn't want to pay, we just move on. The liability's still there for a trip and fall possibly. So this will open it up to more of an efficient operation to where the staff can go and get done what they need to get done and move on. So that's the, that's the proposed revisions. The only, as it states in the report, the only areas that the city wouldn't cover would be if it's due, if damage is due to negligence by the homeowner. So if they damage a sidewalk pulling heavy equipment on it or whatever, they would be responsible to pay for that. But otherwise, if it's an old sidewalk, sidewalk with gray differentials that create trip and fall hazards, the streets department will be able to go in and take care of those in a more timely fashion.
Commissioner Hatch?
Just a random question. How does this ordinance compare with other cities? Do other cities require residents to pay for their repairs, or is it more in this way?
From our research, we've been working on this for the past year or two, trying to get this set up and a plan set up. Most cities just go in and do the work. They don't leave it up to the resident to pay. I don't know how this ordinance or this code came about, but it's not conducive to what we're trying to do.
It, it doesn't really make sense, and I can imagine how frustrating it's been trying to get something fixed because of the liability, but not being able to. So this makes good sense to me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen?
Three questions. The first one, just clarification, is this only public right-of-way? Private roads, HOA are going to still be on them?
It's public right-of-way only. It's our side, our public right-of-way.
How much are the repairs? I know they, they vary. We had that discussion about number of repairs and being able to cut the, the load, but just on average?
It, it varies. Like Jason said previously, it depends on how much you have to pour in that particular subdivision. If it's not a lot, you get charged a light load fee per yard, or we have a full-size truck come in and do a big pour. So Jason, what's a yard of concrete?
I don't know the exact price, but I know most of the repairs vary. One hundred and fifty bucks all the way up to ten thousand, just depending on how much sidewalk is replaced. But I would say the average, three hundred dollars. Did we get a lot of requests for a couple of such, just at the moment? About, you know, replace the whole front, so it's not a huge amount of money. It's not, if it's got a lot of.
So let's, let's assume an average of three hundred dollars that we're not going and asking the public for, which I think is a good thing. It's a good message. It, it provides us a lot more flexibility. What overall are you thinking is going to be the increase in cost to the city? How our budget's going to be impacted?
We've increased our budget a little bit. We'll increase it. We've got safe sidewalk money. So we have a pretty good budget set aside to go in and do this work, but this, this code is hindering us from getting in. So it's hard to use the money when you can't do the work and it's, we spend more time doing bids and trying to get the homeowner to respond than we could have went in and had it done and out of there when the time we working with the resident.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry, I just tried to wrap my head around it. So right now, we're budgeting as a city as if it was a hundred percent being paid for the city and then we're seeking reimbursement?
No, no, this is just, this is, the money we have budgeted is for safe sidewalks. So safe sidewalks includes repairs, mudjacking. We hire a contractor every year to come in and hit certain areas of the city to do horizontal grinding and, and things like that to keep the trip steps down. So we have a budget that that covers all of that. And we try to, we only have a certain size of work staff, so we, we're generally pretty good with the budget we have. We can generally keep up, and Jason can attest to this too. We, we get work orders daily on bad sidewalks throughout the city, and right now, we have a list that we keep, and we're about two years out on the replacement. That's how long the list is, and it's, part of it is this problem that we're trying to get money from the resident.
Okay, yeah, and I, I agree. I guess part of the reason I'm asking is, the way I see it, this is an overall benefit to the community, absolutely, to do this. Helps with the city and the, the risk reduction, some of those kinds of things. I just, I think about it from the context of how much money are we asking the general public for, and it's, it's so small, nobody's really going to see a difference in, in what's going to be put in.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Hollingsworth?
Will this change impact any way the liability, who's liable for any injuries from a sidewalk?
Um, I'd leave that to Duncan for the legal side of it.
So repeat that question for me?
With this change, is there any change in liability for injuries occurring on the sidewalk?
I, as Brian mentioned, I think it puts us in a better position, right? Because those that are doing the work, paying for the work are the ones, I think it, it allows our insurance to kick in more easily because it's because it's clear we're the owners of the sidewalk. We're the ones doing the work. We're putting it out for bid. There's less likelihood that our insurance, well, we, we self-insure up to a certain point. But, but if it becomes to the point where we need to use some of our insurance, then it puts us in a better position. So, and we're able to more easily deal with everything if we're taking all the actions and we're not being required to have someone else like the neighboring property owners take action. Does that kind of answer your question? Yes, so overall, this is a big, a big plus for us, right? So it's, it's better in a lot of respects. It's easier to get the work done, especially if we have the money to do it. It's, it's easier to take care of the payments, have the insurance coverage, just a lot of reasons. And, and then I think you get the economies of scale that Brian's talking about. If we can do a whole bunch of work in one neighborhood, the cost per yard or per whatever goes down. So it's more efficient. And I think it makes us look better. And, and really a lot of what we're trying to do here, I think from having heard Brian talk about it, is we're trying to start with the, the worst sections, so to speak, that are the most dangerous or the highest. Maybe there's three inches taller, higher or whatever. Take care of the worst segments first and then work our way to the other segments later, which... And there's some, actually some case law about if we adopt not just this text amendment, but an overall policy and we handle it a certain way with the right people taking the right actions, it even further reduces our potential liability if we get sued for, you know, for any circumstance that comes up. So yeah, overall, it's a big plus.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, this item is notice for public hearing. So the public hearing is now open for this text amendment. There's nobody here that I know of to speak on this. Is there anybody online?
There is somebody online, but I don't see a hand raised.
If you're hearing this, hearing this online, could you please raise your hand by pressing star nine? No. Okay. Then public hear, yes? Please do, Jason.
I know we were talking about the budget and stuff and we, we do have budgets available like Brian was saying. And we, you know, we end up, if we can't replace a certain amount of sidewalk, we try to use that budget, like you mentioned, for horizontal cutting. But a lot of the ones that we're talking about, the replacements, there's a lot that are like five, six inches that you can't, there, there's no other method that you can replace the, you know, that you can fix the hazard without replacing it. And there's ones that are spalled concrete where the whole surface is off. So there's not, you know, you can't really, unless you tear it out and replace it, it, it's, it's not really an option. But we do have money and we, we try to spend it which way. And it, and it's really not that. Because we cover the labor of, of the replaced, the tear-out and replace and haul the materials off. It's just the concrete cost itself, basically, that, that we're looking to cover. And it's, it's a really time-consuming process. Like we go to each house, grow them up a bit. A lot of people won't be home. We leave contact information. They never call us back. We have to research through different methods to try to get ways to get ahold of them and a lot of times you don't. So we just have to leave those alone and the ones that don't pay. We do our best to mark the hazard with paint, but we, we end up leaving it ultimately in a lot of cases. So, but I just wanted to mention that and it would help us out. It's something we've been trying to do for a long time and we could be a lot more efficient and get a lot more done and, you know, make the city sidewalks safer for the residents to walk on. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Is there still nobody online raising their hand? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Would somebody like to make a motion? Or? Mr. Thomas?
I'll make a motion. I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for this application.
Commissioner Allen?
I'll second that.
This item has been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The conditions for approval have been met and the vote is unanimous. Last item on the agenda is another text amendment for planned community hillside zone with four criteria that must be met for approval. Larry?
So in your staff report, there's actually the two tables that are in the ordinance. That's the only thing that's affected in the ordinance. I didn't put it in the presentation. I chose just to put a, a couple of graphics that are also in your staff report explaining what the, the change or the amendment to the ordinance is. The first amendment is for the lot frontage of townhomes only. It's not for single-family residential or apartments, only for townhomes. And what I have on the screen is a representation of a fourplex, a townhouse, townhome product. And it would change the lot width or the frontage, as it's called, from 22 feet to 20 feet. And really what you see on this plan where the 20 is, is in terrain or formerly known as wood ranch, this will be the rear of the, the housing unit. And so, but it would be a big rectangle. So that would take two feet off of the minimum frontage requirement of each lot. And as the planning commission's aware, each townhome is a separate parcel or several taxable parcel or separate lot in a subdivision. So they have to be at least 20 feet. And so that amendment's from 22 to 20 feet. The second is, as you can see right in the middle of the screen, is an amendment from a minimum of a 10-foot side yard setback for each building. It would be five feet for each building. So it would be a total of 10 between each building rather than 20 as if the ordinance was implemented as it is written now. There'd be 20 feet between each of the townhome products. So these, these things were intended to be included in the original ordinance. But however, there was some confusion, I think, on the, the person who was doing the, it was a contract attorney at that time that actually wrote the ordinance. And so this should clarify or clear up some of the design issues. It's created by the 10-foot setback and the two-foot additional frontage. And as I said in the work meeting, this will only affect terrain or wood ranch because that's the only property in the city that's on PCH at this point. So do you have any questions for me?
So with this change, is there any impact to, for the fire department with this change? No. Okay. Perfect.
Yeah, and the, the, they're all rear-loading and so everything is, the fire will be, fire access will all be from the public street in the front. And I, and all of the alleys are designed in a way that can be used to, for fire access also. So.
Commissioner Roberts?
I just kind of wanted to make a comment and to get it on the record. But in the, in the pre-meeting, I believe it was mentioned that neither of these changes will change the actual density of the subdivision. Just it, it pushes the green space into more common area, correct?
And there's, they're capped at a certain density, so they can't add more units anyway. So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. We will now open public hearing on this item. There's nobody here in council chamber. Anybody online? If you're online, raise your hand.
There are three people online, actually two people. I don't see any hands raised at this point. We can give them a minute?
You can press star nine to raise your hand online so we can recognize you.
Okay, it looks like Scott Chapel.
Scott Chapel, go ahead. You have three minutes to address the council. Scott, can you hear us?
Uh, there's the mute symbol is on.
Push star six to unmute yourself.
Or unmute on your computer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we hear you.
Okay. Yeah, so I just, I just, I was just saying that I'm, I'm a, I, I have a single-family home. I, I just, I didn't know what it affected. Now that I know it affects a townhome, I'm probably a little more okay with that. I was just saying, in the sycamores, our houses and driveways are so close. You know, we can hear our neighbors quite well. But yeah, so I, I don't, I'm not bringing any concern forward. I've just, I was not aware that it was just townhomes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The other person is not there anymore. So.
Okay, that appears to be everyone. So public hearing is now closed. Further discussion? If no further discussion, then we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Allen?
Based on the informations and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanation received today, I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for this application.
Commissioner Roberts?
I'll second that.
Motion and second made. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Commissioner Thomas?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion accepted. Thank you all. See you in a couple of weeks.